I call this meeting to order. Do we have mics? We do now. May the Supreme Legislature grant that we be worthy of our power and responsibility, that we deliberate and achieve with wisdom and understanding, recognizing the rights of all of our citizens with full regard for the dignity and justice of the individual. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get to the regular order of business, we're going to have a moment of silence on behalf of Fire Chief Richard Borden. The City Council thanks him for his service to the city, and we also send our thoughts to his family. Mayor Farantino would like to speak as well.
Thank you very much. All of Havel mourns tonight because of the unexpected and tragic loss of a dedicated public servant, Chief Richard Borden. I had the pleasure of knowing Chief Borden over the past 12 years. He ate, slept, breathed, being a firefighter and being a fire chief. He was born into a family of firefighters. His father was the fire chief, and every single time I talked to him, without exception, Chief Borden talked about the fire department, the city that he loved, and the fire department that he loved. His death shocks all of us, and tonight we send our sympathy to the firefighters who today are without their leader, and we send our sympathy to the Borden family. The services will be, and I think you have that, you can perhaps update me if I'm wrong, Thursday evening at, it's going to be at Northern Essex Community College in the auditorium, and there will be a service there. And what time is that, Mr. President?
Friday.
Four o'clock in the afternoon. All of the councilors and elected officials are-
Is that the wake, Mr. Mayor, or the funeral?
That's the service.
Oh, the service.
The wake.
The wake.
It's Thursday.
At Farmers.
Someone that knows more about this announces if they could. David, do you have that information?
David.
Wake is Thursday at Farmers on Summer Street?
At four.
At four.
At four.
And the service is at Neco in the tech center at 11.
11 on Friday. 11 on Friday morning. So I invite all the councilors to join us. We'll have an honor procession led first, of course, by firefighters. Thank you, and I join with you in the moment of silence.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And now let's have a moment of silence on behalf of Fire Chief Richard Borden. Counselor Daley O'Brien.
I just want to add my condolences and thoughts to the family. I don't think the older chief could have been more proud of anybody than he was of his son. I mean, there's not many families that have a succession of fire chiefs, even in the greater Merrimack Valley, and I know how proud he was. I worked as an emergency room nurse for many years at the Hale Hospital that became Merrimack Valley, and I got to know Rick in the 80s when he served as a paramedic, and, you know, followed his career, and I know how proud his family was of him, and I'm sure his son is deeply grieved by the loss of his dad. It's a very, very sad moment for all of us.
Thank you very much, Counselor. Let's get to the regular order of business. Counselor McGonigal, did you read the minutes from the previous meeting?
I did, Mr. President. Found them to be in order and request that they be placed on file.
Motion by Counselor McGonigal.
Second.
Seceded by Counselor Barrett. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Those are on file. Counselor Lepage, will you do the honors for tonight's meeting?
Yes, I will, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, first item.
Communication from the mayor. Communication from mayor requesting permission to address council regarding city's FY16 budget.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, members of the council. Do you all have the three handouts? Yes. And David, if you could make a copy available to the press when you have a moment. Mr. President and the members of the City Council, tonight I'm pleased to introduce the budget for FY16. The printed version will be out later this week, and the budget hearings can start next week. This budget emphasizes my twin goals of fiscal discipline and improving the quality of life in our city. A very brief overview of the budget is as follows. The public education budget is up by approximately $3 million, $2.9 million, which is 3.85% over last year. This is the largest increase in our operating budget. It's $2.1 million above the minimum spending requirements for public education. In addition to that, I'll be talking about a new extended learning program for the Tilton and Constantino School funded outside the school budget. This budget covers in full our snow deficit rather than kicking the can down the road. This budget adds one new police officer, plus two more from a grant we'll be getting, for a total of 11 new police officers in three years. This continues the great progress we've made in public safety. This budget sets aside $700,000 for capital improvements, but I'll be setting aside a separate capital budget to present to you later on this summer. This budget preserves the $600,000 in levy reserve, and we are not taxing our citizens to the maximum we could tax. And this budget, and the most important thing in it, replenishes our reserves. We're able to balance the budget without taxing to the max and improve services at the same time for three primary reasons. First, last year we had an extraordinary year, with the number of one-time items adding to our free cash totals, the sale of land, excise taxes being up, et cetera. Some of that free cash is used in this budget. Number two, over the years we've exercised strict fiscal discipline, controlled our expenses, and not given into unreasonable demands, and that must continue for the fiscal stability of the city of Havel. And number three, and most important, the extraordinary efforts of State Representative Brian Dempsey, who once again came through for the city with $2.4 million to assist us in paying the Hale debt, the largest municipal debt in the history of the Commonwealth. The total overall budget is up $8.8 million, but in a way that's misleading, because that includes $4 million in one-time money, and of that $4 million, we're setting aside 2.4 of that, not to spend it at all, but to replenish our reserves. Of the increase in the budget, $2.7 million is from local property taxes, and as I mentioned, we are not increasing property taxes to the maximum amount. I believe we should wait until November or December when we set the tax bills to see if we can reduce tax bills even further by using more free cash, but we need to determine first how much free cash we'll have at that time. Let me turn now to a PowerPoint and talk to you a little bit about, first, where our money comes from, and, secondly, where it goes, and all of you have that in front of you. I don't know if it's visible to the people at home or not. Let me outline our revenues, which, as you can see, are up substantially, and then our expenditures. As you can see from the chart on the screen here and in front of you, the two largest portions of our revenue by far and away are local property taxes, which is 53% of our revenue, and 34%, which is state aid. Everything else together, all of the things that you and I spend an awful lot of time talking about, the meals tax, excise tax, pay for parking, all of the fees and costs here at City Hall, all of those things together are the little slice at the bottom called local receipts, which is 10% of the budget. I don't want to downplay that, but as you can see, the big revenue items, local property taxes and state aid. Revenues were up last year, and let me give you a breakdown on some of the revenue increases. Property taxes, by taxing not quite to the levy limit, are up $2.7 million. State aid is up $1.7 million, and we thank our entire legislative delegation and the governor for working to increase state aid. Motor vehicle taxes are up. We're estimating, they were up $244,000, and we're estimating that this will continue, but no one knows for certain if people are going to continue to buy cars or how many they're going to buy, et cetera. Medicare Part D reimbursement we get from the federal government is up $70,000, and we're estimating that school Medicaid money, which goes into the city budget, is up by $65,000. To give you a little bit more breakdown on some of the things that are up and why we have some money to spend. Hale Hospital debt aid, once again Representative Dempsey came through, and once again we thank him for his great effort on behalf of the city. Chapter 70 school aid is up $1.7 million from the state, and that's a large part of the $3 million increase that they're getting in their budget. Unrestricted local aid, that's the money that goes to cities in order to be able to balance its budget. That is up 3.6%, $314,000. We're a long way from the way where we were just a few years ago when we were talking about big cuts in state aid. Some additional revenue sources, the meals tax, we're estimating will bring in $784,000 this year. You recall, those of you who've been on the council for a while, that when we put the meals tax in, we were looking at about $450,000. It's gone up dramatically over the years. All of the people that said that if we voted for the meals tax, all the restaurants would go out of business, were wrong. The hotel tax is up $94,000, and again, the council worked with me to increase that local revenue option. And a couple of minor things, the cable fee remains steady at $200,000, and the ambulance fee is going up this year by $2,000. A total of $1.3 million in relatively small items, but items that help us to balance the budget. Now, the one thing that isn't up is new growth, and this is a substantial concern to me. Like you, I hear, I meet people all over the city every day, and I meet people all over the city. I was talking to Counselor Barrett today, and I say to them, is there too much growth in the city or too little? Counselor Barrett answered it correctly. But most people tell me, oh, the city's growing by leaps and bounds. There's too much growth in the city. But the fact of the matter is, there's very little. There's been no major project improved in the last several years, and new growth numbers have never returned to their pre-recession levels. 2008 is a bit an anomaly because of some one-time items that came in from National Grid, but as you can see in '03, '04, or '05, '06, we've never returned to those levels, and we need to talk about that, and I will be talking to you about it over the course of the next year and in this budget message. All budgets have to be balanced, so the next step after we get our money is, where does it go? The largest portion of our budget, by far and away, is public education, public schools, and it should be. It's the most important thing that we do in our budget. Education is, this year amounts to 42% of our operating budget, followed by employee benefits at 23% and public safety at 12%. And it's always around these numbers. But those numbers substantially underestimate what portion of the budget we're really spending on public education, because those numbers do not include that portion of the healthcare budget, which is going towards education, and that portion of the capital budget, which is going towards education, or that portion of the pension budget, which is going towards education. I didn't have the chance to calculate it, but somewhere around 55% of the total expenditures that we have go towards public education. And when we look only at the real operating budget, when we take out debt, when we take out utility costs, the things that we really can't control, somewhere around 60 or 65% of the operating budget goes towards public education, as it should. This year we see a dramatic increase in public education funding. It's up $2.9 million, $3 million, basically, which is 3.85% more than last year. It's the most the city has ever contributed to public education, and it's the largest public education budget ever submitted. It's $2.1 million above the minimum spending requirements for education. Now, when I sat, I was going to say there, I never sat there, Mr. President, but when I sat on the City Council, you and I, Mr. President, would often argue with the mayor at that time and say we need to fund public education at higher than the minimum levels. I'm sure you remember that. And the mayor at that time said, well, I'd love to do it, but I can't, because the other councilors would cut it, and perhaps he was right, but this council has been terrific and has never cut a dollar from public education, which I'd urge you to continue that, and the days when we fund at the minimum, those days are long over. A few weeks ago Superintendent Scully, who's here tonight, approached the school committee and said that his proposed budget would be substantially short. I amended my proposed budget to add an additional $1 million in public education. Superintendent Scully, who's the best fiscal manager I've ever worked with as a superintendent, then cut an additional million, and the schools today have a balanced budget with money that can either improve performance, add services, or settle contracts for reasonable amounts, and that will be up to the school department. The increase in spending for public schools continues our trend of increasing public education spending over the years. From 2006 until 2016, we've increased spending on public education by $26 million. The $3 million increase this year far dwarfs any other increases in the budget. I'd like to tell you that all of that is good news, but there's a real storm cloud on the horizon in education, and that's the dramatic increase in special education costs. This year's special education costs are up a staggering 29%. Now, I tell people, you don't need to be an accountant or an actuary, you don't need to be a finance expert, to know this. If the most we can raise in taxes is 2.5%, and one major element of our budget is up by 29%, we've got a problem. And that problem is that unless we control the cost of public education, we're going to have year after year after year, where all of the increases to education go to a very tiny group, and all of the people who are in back of me, and all of the people that we represent, the students in the city, don't get any benefit. This year, the $2.9 million in increase in special education, in funding for education, basically goes to pay for increases in special education costs. This is simply unsustainable, and unless we, the city and the state, do a better job of controlling special education costs, we'll see this problem year after year after year. For all of the difficulties and for all of the funding, we've made substantial progress in public education. We now have, for the first time, four Level One schools in the city. Until last year, we had only a charter school that had ever been Level One. For all that we've done in public education, though, more needs to be done. I'm nowhere near satisfied, and we need to do more. We need to start at the Tilton School. Now, we all know that the Tilton School is our problem school in Havel. It's a Level Three school where we have four Level One schools. This isn't because of the teachers, whom I've been up to the Tilton many, many times. It's not because of the principal. They all do an excellent job. It's because we need more resources to put into that school. Data does not show any correlation between spending on education and improvement in test scores, but it does show a strong correlation between increased learning time and improvement in public education, and that's where we need to concentrate. Now, this is just common sense. We all know from our own experience, and all of us going to school, that the harder you study, the better you do. We all know from our own jobs, that the harder you work at your job and the longer you work at it, the better you're going to do. So tonight's budget, in addition to the $8 million for public education, also includes a special budgeted item outside of the school budget of $78,000 for extended learning time at the Constantino and the Tilton Schools. I hope that this works so well there that someday we can expand this, probably with the use of extended learning time grants, to all of the schools in the city. This amount will provide for summer schools starting this summer for the children at those two schools. I want to commend Superintendent Scully and his assistant Jonathan Ledger for working with me to develop that program. This program will say to students, we want to help you by giving you the opportunity to learn more, and it will say to them, we're going to give you the opportunity for four weeks of summer school, and we want you to go, but if you decide not to go, then you can't go on to the next grade at school. This will be available to the children, and I say available, because I look upon it as an opportunity, to the children who are in danger of failing. Those children, we have to do better for them. They're going to go out into the workforce and compete with kids from all around the world, and I believe the extended learning time is the way to do that. Budgets are always a balance between maintaining quality of services today and planning for tomorrow. This budget continues the great progress that we've made in public education, public safety, over the past few years. The budget adds $300,000 in funding for public safety and adds one more police officer to the force. In addition, over the next few weeks, we'll be swearing in five new officers, all ready to go, to fill all of our vacancies. This will give us two additional officers under a state grant, once again obtained for us courtesy of Representative Dempsey. This brings us to 11 new police officers over the past three years. But controlling crime isn't just about hiring more and more and more and more. It is never enough. It's also about the best use of resources we have and about combining our resources with the resources of others to make certain our citizens are safe. Last year, we became the first city in the eastern United States to use predictive analysis software to predict where crimes might occur. We worked with our state and federal officials to have combined raids that all of you have read about in the newspaper, and last year we had an 11% reduction in crime. But I think more importantly than that, our police department did an outstanding job of breaking up from the top down some of the gangs that all of us have been so concerned about in our city. Last year, we made a special effort to improve parks and playgrounds throughout the city. Thanks to a state grant, we improved Swayze Field and put in a splash park in the field where earlier we'd used our own CDBG money to put in a new playground. We used our own money to add playground equipment to Riverside Park. We improved bathrooms and other improvements to Riverside Park, Plugs Pond and Winnie Kinney. And once again with a state grant, we put in a new playground, which people love, at G A R Park, and I have a picture of it here, and I can tell you, having been over there, we've reclaimed G A R Park, and people absolutely love it. This budget continues that progress. I've included in the budget a small amount of money to monitor the building of the new rail trail, which is scheduled to break ground in the summer. I've also included $100,000 to improve playgrounds and parks, and I'll propose to you later in the year that we use most of that money to improve our flagship park, Riverside Park. Riverside Park is our number-one park in the city. Winnie Kinney is also right up there, but Riverside Park needs some attention. The plan I'll present to you later on this year is to use another source of money to rebuild the eroded walkway and riverwalk, to add more trees and benches, to put in a kayak launching ramp, to open up the view of the river, and expand some of the walking trails to include bike paths. We can't do all of that with $100,000, and we can't do it all in a year, but I believe a journey of 1,000 steps, of 1,000 miles starts with a single step, and we should take that step today at Riverside Park. This is not a capital budget, that'll come later on this year, but we do set aside $700,000 for capital improvements. Some of those improvements should be around City Hall, which is sorely in need of assistance, where we'll do an assessment of the building and its surrounding, and some of that money should be set aside for the number-one complaint that I get throughout the city, which is to repair sidewalks. This budget includes $50,000 for sidewalk repairs. It is a drop in the budget, a drop in the budget, a drop in the bucket, and millions more needs to be done, but we need to start somewhere. The budget also includes money to continue our progress in economic development. Last week, many of us attended an update on the Harbor Place Project. We're making tremendous progress on economic development, something that I think is visible to the entire city. I get asked all the time about economic development and why are you pushing this? But economic development is not the enemy of good service. Economic development and growth in the city are the keys to the future of our city. Economic growth is key to be able to obtain enough tax revenue to provide the services that we need and desire. If you look at the cities nationwide, the cities that are doing well are the Sun Belt cities, that are growing, having the tax base to add services. The cities that are in dire straits, Detroit, Baltimore, Dayton, Ohio, just to name a few, are the cities that are shrinking and when there is no growth. We need to grow as a city, but we need to do it right. This budget includes a small amount of money to continue to advertise our vacant industrial properties on the internet, and have also included $50,000 in the budget to evaluate proposals that come before us for economic development. That money should be seen as a revolving fund, because ultimately it's the developers that need to repay us. But the balance of that money should be used to assist us in something that's long overdue in the city, and that is updating our master plan. Doing a master plan is something that will take years to do, and much more than the $50,000 that I've allocated, but I believe we need to get started now. One of the most critical elements in the budget is something that isn't sexy, something that no one will ever call you or me or email us about. No one will ever send us an email saying, replenish your stabilization account, put more money aside for a rainy day, but I suggest it's the most important thing we're going to do in the budget. Reserves are the critical reason why our bond rating today is at the highest it's ever been in its history. Twice in recent years, reserves allowed us to weather the storm and prevented problems from becoming catastrophes. In 2013, the school budget went into deficit by $1.2 million. Because we had adequate reserves, we were able to weather the storm. In November of last year, the $2.4 million that Representative Dempsey got us in order to balance the Hale debt was cut by outgoing Governor Patrick. Because we had adequate reserves, we were able to meet that cut of $2.4 million without laying off a single person or cutting a single program. The schools last year had reserves of $400,000. It may be needed to balance the FY15 budget. I'm sure the superintendent will let us know at the appropriate time, but that amount was critical. This budget proposes adding $2.4 million to stabilization to bring us back to the level that we should be at, the $3 million level, replenishing the reserves we used last year. The levy reserve is also a reserve, and that remains today at $600,000. Now, in addition to these programs and reserves, there are some items that I'll need to discuss with you in the budget, and I pledged you that I'll work with you on them. Potential cost-saving items to the city. The first is purchasing the streetlights in the city. We're going to come before you shortly if we can work out an agreement with National Grid to purchase the streetlights. We believe this can save us up to $450,000 a year, but it will require some initial capital investment. Chapter 90 funds will allow us to pave more streets this year than we've ever paved in the past. We need to talk together and work together about the paid parking program. The paid parking program was never designed to be a major revenue item, but it shouldn't lose money. It should be self-supporting and give us enough money to do flowers and plants downtown and to keep downtown looking clean and attractive. And we need to work together to amend and revise our- And we need to work together to amend and revise our trash pickup and recycling program, which can save us up to $450,000 a year. I'd like to get up and give an all-rosy picture of what lies ahead, but we have some major challenges that lie ahead of us. Each of those challenges will require us to have adequate reserves and to hold the line on spending. Together, these challenges will be major challenges for the city of Havil. The first of these challenges is called post-employment liability. The three together are post-employment liability, CSO and stormwater, and the second mound of the landfill. The first of these challenges is called post-employment liability, pensions and healthcare. This year's pension assessment was up by over $1 million. Even at that rate, as you'll hear during the budget hearings, we're not adequately contributing to our pension funds. Part of our post-employment liability, the other part of our post-employment liability is what's called OPEB. OPEB is Other Post-Employment Benefits, primarily healthcare benefits upon retirement. Those of you who have been on the council for a while recall that I used to talk about what I called GASB-45, General Accounting Standards Bureau Standard 45. It's now called OPEB liability. It's the same thing. It means the city's obligation to pay the healthcare benefits upon retirement. A few years ago, when the GASB-45 standards changed, we hired an actuary, as we were required to, and got an estimate of our post-employment liability. The number is staggering, $270 million. We can never save $270 million. It's the entire budget for a couple of years. But we can begin putting aside money, and I have some proposals that I'll talk to you about at budget time. Changing the design of our healthcare system, which we work together on, has reduced the post-employment liability, but we need to do more. The second storm cloud on the horizon concerns stormwaters and CSO, combined sewer overflow. I've spoken about this before to the city council and the public, and I offer a brief update here. We estimate we're going to have to pay about $50 million in funding CSO improvements. CSOs and stormwater, make no mistake about it, are unfunded federal mandates. These two charts put together by Bob Wood indicate that with CSOs with combined sewer overflows, we've already spending, in the budget now, $1.1 million for CSO improvements. We estimate the total of CSOs, if you go down to the total, to the bottom, we're going to end up spending, probably, the key number is the question mark there, between $35 and $50 million in CSO improvements. Stormwater is what I call CSO's cousin. CSOs are combined sewer overflows. What happens if there's a big storm and water gets washed, and sewage gets washed from our sewage treatment plant out to the river? Stormwater is what happens if there's a storm and water gets washed down the street and ends up in the river. The EPA is requiring us to do millions and millions of dollars in order to reduce the amount of stormwater that goes into the river. This budget that you'll have before you, the enterprise budget, already includes $372,000 for stormwater. The EPA is working on what they call a draft second permit, which we estimate will require us to spend $1.1 million a year in addition to that for stormwater improvements. We believe, and most of the mayors believe, and most of the cities who are affected believe, that the proposed EPA regulations are onerous and burdensome, requiring us to spend much more money than needs to be spent to justify the fairly small improvements in water quality. Not only do we believe this, but the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection, the agency which is in charge of protecting the environment for the state, sides with us, at least on stormwater, and has written a letter to the federal government saying that they're expressing our concerns about some of the stormwater improvements. We'll keep working on that, but it's something that we need to look out for in the budget. Let me conclude with this. We had a great year last year, thanks to the free cash that we had. We're fortunate as a city to have Representative Dempsey to be able to assist us. This budget covers our basic needs. It adds in areas where we need to add, like schools and police, and holds the line on spending in other areas. Unlike many other cities you're going to read about throughout the Commonwealth, we're not cutting anybody, we're not laying anybody off. It's a far cry from when I addressed you just a few years ago. Nor are we asking, as many of the small towns are, for override or dead exclusions. Today is the day when we're able to have a good and decent budget, preserve our services without increasing taxes to the max. Today is also the day when we need to plan for tomorrow. Because as certain as I stand here today, I can tell you that at some point in the future, there'll be another downturn. We need to keep these reserves. It's the most important message I have. Keep our reserves intact, so when that downturn hits, we have the reserves to meet it. Mr. President, I look forward to working with you on the budget, and as always, it's the most important thing the council does, and I'll be at all your budget hearings.
Thank you very much for the overview, and we look forward to the budget hearings as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. Madam Clerk, next item.
Communication from Police Chief Alan Denaro, street closing Winchester and Revere Street. Related communication from School Superintendent James Scully.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the city council. As you can see from the communication from our police chief, that this past week, members of your city council, Council McGonigal, Council Sullivan, the late fire chief, was so much appreciated by so many, and Police Chief Alan Denaro, myself, and others met relevant to issues that are construction project, and I believe you have a diagram in front of you. If you don't, I have extras with me. Basically, the issue is this, that the driveway from the fire station into the Honking School is not a public way, but for years, Revere Street and Winchester Street fed onto the school grounds. And now that we're under construction, and with the opening of the road, cutting down the trees, and preparing the site, it has become, in a sense, Pine Speedway. We've had numerous close calls with construction vehicles and children walking. We've put up storm fences. The construction company has put up signs, 15 miles per hour, but it's a continuous problem. So what we're suggesting, and respectfully asking, is that we would like to, till the end of construction, it's temporary closing, close Revere Street, as indicated in your drawings, and close Winchester Street, except for the hours 8:20 to 9:40, and 2:40 to 2:50, I'm sorry, 2:20 to 2:40. That allows us the buses to come in from that neighborhood and other cars to egress. When we began this project, we told many that, you know, the possibility of the street closing was coming. We tried to accommodate everybody, but the fact of the matter is, the vehicular traffic is much more than was calculated, and it's become a real safety problem. So with that, I respectfully ask that, I mean, we'd like to move this along as fast as we can. Just for the council's information, we're ahead of schedule with the construction project. If you've been over there, the site is prepared. We're, the city today was very helpful and okayed all the drawings, so we're good to go. The site has been cut down to grade level, so we're set to start doing the foundation. And every day on the webpage, if you look at the Havil Public Schools, you can see what's going on there daily. Every other day, there's videos and everything associated with the construction project. So we're going ahead full speed, and things are working out very, very well.
Mr. Scully, you may have mentioned this, but what is the period of time that you'd like to block those roads?
Probably to the end of 2000. We're hoping on opening the school in partially open January 2017, then we have demolition. So probably to the end of 2017, early 2018.
Thank you.
There's so many vehicles, it's just pretty tough.
Thank you. Council McGonigal.
Thank you, Mr. President. And the chief of police called earlier today, and Council Sullivan and I were at the meeting, and the chief 100% supports this, based upon the nature of that. That is a private driveway, really, for the school. And Superintendent Scully is going to handle, his personnel are going to handle, opening and closing those roads. They're going to do that every day. And at the end of the construction period, once the demolition is done, that could probably come back to the council, and we'll decide what should happen at that point. But 100% public safety issue here, and, you know, this is very important, to make sure that cars don't try to get around and skirt through there to beat a light or to, or beat traffic. There are a lot of children that are left off there, and I think that's, I'm going to support this and make a motion at the right time that we do approve this.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Counselor. Counselor Daley O'Brien.
Thank you, Mr. President. So with the closure of these, what is going to be the entrance and exit while these streets are closed?
Off of 125, and they can still come in Winchester. And if you face the fire station to the right, that's where the major steel and many items will be brought in as soon as they handle the electrical conduits that are going from the telephone pole to the fire station.
So the entrance-exit that we know is not a public way is what we're going to use?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I think that's the thing that we should really publicize, not only just that these closures, because what if a parent has to pick a child up, drop a child off?
They can come in 125. That's going to remain open. And the original plan submitted to the state actually had those two streets closed, with a fire gate like we had up, that we have at the high school, those yellow gates. But the problem is, we tried to wait to do that, but the vehicular traffic has increased so much, it's become a problem.
Well, I don't see any problem with supporting your request. I mean, the children's safety is paramount, and I really appreciate where you're coming from. So you're going to use the same gate as you do at Havil High?
Well, that's the plans we put into the state. But again, you know, we weren't anticipating the amount of cars that cut through. So that's the issue.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Barrett.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counselor O'Brien covered my question.
Okay. Thank you very much. Mr. Vice President.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Scully, just out of curiosity, is it going to be signage at the intersections of Revere and Kingsbury, and Winchester and Kingsbury?
Yes.
Because, you know, what's going to happen, I'm afraid, is it's just going to create maybe a bigger problem on those two streets, as long as...
All the parents that come down, they'll all be so notified, once we get the concrete barriers.
You know, I live on Revere, and I really haven't seen that, but I can understand...
Revere isn't really the problem. It's Winchester.
It's Winchester. But I can understand the rationale behind the decision.
You can't blame the people, because they're trying to avoid the traffic out on 125 and use the lights, so.
Use that left-handed signal. Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Just a couple of questions. One is, would you consider extending the time? Right now, you have between 8:15 and 8:40. Would you consider extending that from 8:00 to 8:45, just based on feedback that I've gotten?
Yeah, that's, the problem is, we've got to schedule the construction trucks. So that's why we've tried to keep it to a 20- to 30-minute opening, because we have, we want to get the construction trucks in in the morning, and then get them out in the afternoon. So we're working with not just the vehicular traffic, but we're trying to work with all the construction companies that are involved there. So that was the agreement we kind of came to, because we're a big, we'd rather have the truck get on the site, rather than have them parked out on 125, you know, a trailer with, so that's part of the reason we did it. That's why we set that time.
Okay.
I mean, we could extend it, but the agreement we made with all the parties involved was those times.
So what's the negative of closing that off and only opening it up at that period of time? What's the negative? Are there going to be a lot of parents that are not going to be able...
No, parents, that's when the parents come in. We did a study on what time parents come and go.
They all just come in during 25 minutes?
Yep. Yep. School starts, school starts around 8:25, the doors, 8:30, the children in the school, so it's in that 15, it's really about a 15-minute turnaround.
And you did a study on it?
Well, we've done many studies, yes. But I've personally gone on there every single day since we started the project, and personally counted cars and watched cars, along with the police department and myself. I was there today again, and those are the tight times.
Because there is going, I mean, as Counselor Daley O'Brien said, the safety of the kids and the adults as well is probably, I mean, it is the highest priority, right? But there is going to be a negative impact on, especially the people that live on Winchester Street. And are we trying to, are we doing anything to mitigate that?
Well, I, there's only one or two cars that come from people that live on Winchester Street. We've done that. We know who all the people are.
So you think there's one or two cars?
And that's what we've studied, and I've been there. The reality is, Mr. President, when we start putting steel up, it's going to be an inconvenience for some way, so, I mean, if one or two cars have to go another street, if we want to keep the project on time, I've got to work with the contractors to keep these roads open, and there's a number of children just to go on that street. And the contractors have been excellent, and, you know, one neighbor said, "Well, I've used that for 40 years," but A, it's not a public way, B, there's 500 children walking on that street, and I don't think vehicles have the right to fly up and down that street the way they are. And if, I'd be remiss if I didn't bring that to your attention, and that's why the police chief, the fire chief, we all met. So if one or two people get inconvenienced, with all due respect, I think it's to do what's right for the number of children, and also the construction workers that are over there.
Yes.
I mean, we've come to you before with, you know, prices, and we've stuck to everything on plan. We're ahead of schedule, and if we're going to stay the course, we can't keep bending or it's not going to happen.
I've got two more points to make. One is, is there going to be any security? I mean, just walking around there today, you just got the sense that, you know, lots of things could happen. For example, in the back, you've got that pile of dirt, right, that you dug up from the field, right? And right now, it's not blocked off. I mean, kids could walk in there.
Right. We have video...
Could you block that off?
We have video surveillance, and if, depending what time you're there, but there's usually a construction fence around everything. There are things that we've done that you didn't have to do. For example, on the fence, we put up all that green netting to block as much dust as we can. So we've taken, you know, we've asked the contractor to do things that are not in his contract to accommodate everybody. But for a project of that size, I can tell you all the, everything's safety that's required, and not even things that are required that are being done above and beyond.
So you have security there, though, when they're working?
Well, we don't have security all at night, but we have, during the day, there's security, yes.
Okay.
Yep. It is, the site is overseen by a safety officer. In the Commonwealth, you can't do a project like that unless you have a safety officer in it.
During the times of operation.
And then after times of operation, we have video surveillance. We have routine checks by the police department, and as we get into the project, we're going to increase security.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Can I just, before, I just want to, just one other item, I'd just like to, I'd like to just publicly thank the mayor for working with us. As you've known, we've had difficult times in the past. A couple of years ago, with the sped budget going over $1 million or so, it was tough, and we put some financial constraints on it. We put in a monitoring, an auditing firm to help us, and I have to tell you, this year, I had to say to him the other night, "Mayor, I can't pick on you for a year," because we are able to come together and work through the fiscal issues. And as he indicated in his presentation tonight, you know, the sped costs, and there's so many costs going up, are just incredible. But it's, I think it's a wonderful thing for the city to be able to come together financially so we can close the school year correctly and open the school year correctly, without the threat of people losing their jobs and what have you. I don't think there's a, there's a city in the Commonwealth that's not proposing layoffs and what have you, and I, with all due respect and thanks to the mayor, we don't have to propose layoffs and things of that nature. We've got a tough road ahead of us to control costs and try to accommodate all the requests that we have, but I'm confident we can do it, and I just wanted to publicly point that out to the city council tonight, and publicly thank the mayor for doing, working so well with us, so, thank you all.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, would you please, oh, I'm sorry, we need a motion first, from Counsel McGonigal.
Make a motion that we do accept the recommendation to close Revere and Winchester.
Second.
And there's a motion by Counsel McGonigal, seconded by Counselor Daley O'Brien. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Scatimachia.
Yes.
Counsel Barrett.
Yes.
Counsel Mason.
Yes.
Counsel Ryan.
Yes.
Counsel Sullivan.
Yes.
Counsel Daley O'Brien.
Yes.
Counsel McGonigal.
Yes.
Counsel Page.
Yes.
President Richardson.
Yes.
Nye, zero, nays.
And that passes. Next item.
Document 59B, petition from National Grid to construct underground electric conduit in vicinity of 54 Merrimack Street to service new apartment. Document 59B, order, grant conduit location to National Grid in vicinity of 54 Merrimack Street.
I open the hearing, and your name and address for the record.
Hi, good evening. My name is Carlos Vallet, and I'm here, I'm an engineer for National Grid. National Grid and I'm representing National Grid for this underground construction. We're simply going to be going 50 feet from a manhole across the road to feed a vault inside the multifamily building. That's it.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor? Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor? Is there anyone opposed that would like to speak? Is there anyone opposed that would like to speak? With that, I close the hearing. Counsel, what is your wish? Counsel Barrett.
Thank you, Mr. President. The vault that you're going to go through, is that the one in front of the older Penn Tucket Bank on, on...
The manhole?
Yeah. I didn't, you said a vault, I didn't know there was...
Oh, the vault is going to be inside the building.
It's going to be inside the building?
Inside the new building, yes.
But you're going in to the ground in a manhole or...
Yep.
Is it on the sidewalk in front of the Penn Tucket Bank or is it in the street?
It's on the sidewalk, half driveway.
Okay.
Yeah.
How long will that take?
It should take possibly a day or two at the most.
Okay, and, and you'll block traffic in that area or what will you do traffic-wise?
Traffic-wise, everything has been coordinated to...
With, with like the Penn Tucket Bank or whoever might be affected by that down there?
Correct, yep.
And they'll be able to get onto their property?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion?
Move for passage of the order.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Masek, seconded by Counselor Daley O'Brien. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Scaramaccia.
Yes.
Counselor Barrett.
Yes.
Counselor Masek.
Yes.
Counselor Ryan.
Yes.
Counselor Sullivan.
Yes.
Counselor Daley O'Brien.
Yes.
Counselor McGonigal.
Yes.
Counselor Page.
Yes.
President Mitchison.
Yes.
Nye, zero, nays.
And that passes. Next item.
Document 48, petition from Attorney Joseph P. Sullivan for applicant Water Street Waterfront LLC, Frank Franzone, requesting special permit to build a 59-unit multifamily dwelling at 85 Water Street. Conditional approvals have been received from the Fire Department and Conservation Department and a communication has been received for Attorney Sullivan requesting postponement of hearing.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the city council. It's a pleasure to be before you this evening. For your record, I'm Joe Sullivan. I have a law office in Newburyport at 246 High Street and I have the pleasure of representing Waterfront, Water Street Waterfront LLC and its principal, Mr. Frank Franzone, who was here earlier this evening but was called away on other business. We've been working in a cooperative fashion with, with representatives of the planning office and also a consultant architect that's been retained by the city and I think we're, there have been some suggestions that I think are going to be an enhancement to the, the project, but we're going to need more time to work out the details and the suggestion was to continue it to the 30th of June and bring the, the project in for approval, hopefully approval on, on that night. So respectfully request that you approve the motion to continue to June 30th.
Move approval of the proposal.
Motion by Counsel Ryan, seconded by Counsel Barrett. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Scaramaccia.
Yes.
Counsel Barrett.
Yes.
Counselor Masek.
Yes.
Counselor Ryan.
Yes.
Counselor Sullivan.
Yes.
Counselor Daley O'Brien.
Yes.
Counselor McGonigal.
Yes.
Counselor Page.
Yes.
President Mitchison.
Yes.
Nye, zero, nays.
That passes.
Thank you very much.
See you in June 30th. Thank you. Next item.
Order to declare surplus property located at 14 Forest Street.
Move to declare the property surplus.
Motion by Counsel Ryan, seconded by Counselor Daley O'Brien. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Scaramaccia.
Yes.
Counselor Barrett.
Yes.
Counselor Masek.
Yes.
Counselor Ryan.
Yes.
Counselor Sullivan.
Yes.
Counselor Daley O'Brien.
Yes.
Counselor McGonigal.
Yes.
Counselor Page.
Yes.
President Mitchison.
Yes.
Nye, zero, nays.
And that passes. Next item.
Order authorizing mayor to enter into agreement with Sun Edison to construct solar array on capped portion of city landfill and to purchase net metering credits.
Move approval of the order.
Second.
Motion by Counsel Ryan, seconded by Counselor Daley O'Brien and Counselor Page has a question, but did the mayor want to give a, a pitch?
I'll leave that to all the... Happy to answer any questions.
Thought you were going to get out of that though, didn't you, for a second there?
I thought so. The, I believe it was a couple of months ago, it came before the council, we, we went to, we went out to an RFP, RFP 00915 and that night we awarded the, the RFP to Sun Edison. This just memorializes their response, which is the purchase of net metering credits at eight cents a kilowatt hour that are currently valued at today's market, 18 and a half cents, producing, I think, a net savings over 20 years, assuming the net metering credits don't increase in value, which I think is unlikely, $6.1 million over 20 years, on top of lease and pilot payments that have, that have already been pre-negotiated.
Okay, thank you very much. Counselor Page.
Thank you, Mr. President. Orlando, is that factoring in that net metering cap is going to be lifted?
Yes. That this agreement is under the assumption, or the economics are under the assumption that the net metering cap will be lifted. If for some reason it is not lifted, there is a change of law provision in the agreement that you have in front of you that allows the city to go back and negotiate with the developer.
Okay, so at the, at the moment, the current savings now is $6 million? Is that based on the size of...
That's based on the size of the project, the projected output of the project and the assumption that the, the value of the net metering credits don't increase.
Okay. Was the project much larger when they bid for it before? Did they say they were going to make a larger...
No. No, I think, I think their, their, their long-term goal was to utilize additional properties that weren't part of the original RFP, but those come with certain complications, some of it's conservation land, so I don't think that's going to be feasible.
Right, because I think from the first time, there's maybe up to $12 million for the saving over 20 years.
Yes, I think from the, some of the, some of the scenarios that were proposed in the RFP, but what's, what's been awarded was substantially different. We allowed developers to be a little bit innovative with the site, but ultimately it's, it's what the city can accommodate and until the second phase of the landfill is capped, I don't think you're going to see a $10 million plus number.
Okay, and I'm sorry, so the $6 million, again, so if net metering isn't lifted, what will be, have we talked with them? Have we gotten scenarios of what the benefit will be to the city if that doesn't happen?
I, I think there would have to be a renegotiation of the terms, but there are economic models that can be implemented to make projects move forward without net metering. They're not as lucrative.
So, so we're at $6 million now, but we don't, so, and if I read this correctly, the construction start date is 300 days from tonight.
Mm-hmm.
Is, is 300 days a normal, if, if they know, this is a power purchase agreement, correct?
Yep.
So they're, they'll have this in their hand, they'll be able to go and, go talk to folks for financing, construction, do that. Do they need almost a full year or is that also because they're timing out the net metering and also looking, because that cap hasn't been expanded and also the, the solar recs and the federal exemption that possibly dying at the end of 2016?
Well, there's, there's a couple of different components. The 300 days actually probably has more to do with getting interconnection from National Grid than, than anything. That is just, it's a slow process, the queue is flooded and, and so that, that is very much out of the developer's control. The SREC market or the solar renewable energy certificate market isn't so much the issue as much as the net metering allocation because that is actually full, but then there is the other component, which is the investment tax credit, which at the end of 2016, so January 1, 2017, the federal investment tax credit is going to go from 30% to 10% unless something in Congress changes. And we're, we're certainly following that, but there's, if that does happen, there'll have to be some horse trading, I'm sure, because the, the sides are very far apart on, on an agreement there. That much we know from, from what we've been following.
This, and I'm sorry, this, this whole period of time, this 300 days, i- is that a window that should be much smaller for us? Are we, are we opening ourselves because they're not sure what's going to happen? Are they going to, if the project doesn't happen at all? I mean, it, could it be that in that period of time, if they don't do anything within 300 days and such, it's sad something, is it not time for anyone else to do something? Are we kind of...
Well, I think at that point then, we're in a bit of a predicament where we'd have to go back out to RFP anyway. I don't think 300 days is, in, in this business necessarily has an impact because I think the next developer is also going to need a substantial amount of time.
But if that were to happen, if they were to go to that time, there wouldn't really be enough time for another negotiation or another...
Sun Edison does have a representative here and I think their, their drop dead date to sort of, I guess renegotiate or re-amortize the project in some fashion is really July of 2016, so I think we've got a lot of time to get to that point. What we're dealing with at the state level is, I, I think there is, there's certainly a desire to keep the, the renewable energy market moving, but there is, there are those that are pushing for a short-term plan and there are those that are pushing for a longer-term plan and, you know, that, that is a legislative solution that has to happen and there is a net metering task force that is meeting and that is working on a resolution, but to date they have not come to a resolution, at least that all parties can agree to.
Right, and, and so folks, the net metering portion of it is really just specifically to us, the National Grid. I mean, other parts of the state don't have this issue at this moment in time.
I know, it looks like pretty much the net metering queue is full in, in just about all across the state. I think there's maybe a little bit more in, in Starnum-Miko, but those, they're, the queue is being flooded right now with projects and so that changes every day. So there are days, yes, I've seen the, the, the ACA.
ACA, right.
Yep.
And how, so, okay.
So, that, that number will change tomorrow morning.
Right, and, and to go, we're also looking at another solar provider or another landfill, right? Another community has one that we're looking...
Yes, we're working on...
I'm sorry to jump ahead a little bit, but...
No, no, that's, well, it's not a landfill, but it, it is a power purchase agreement with another company.
A solar farm that will, another community that is now ready to hook up and ready to go.
Yes, it already has cap allocation.
Okay, so it just, so again, we don't, we don't have it...
It's a much smaller project though.
Right.
But still a net, just preliminary numbers, a net benefit to the city around $75,000, so it's certainly a positive thing.
Right, I just want to make sure that we're not having too big a window that if something were to happen, if the Sun Edison and the provider doesn't want to, can't work out a deal, that then we, we're not able to do anything. Then the landfill sits as an asset, just isn't being utilized for, I don't know, how many more years as a, you know, possibly a solar project.
No, I, I, Sun Edison is very much committed to the project just based on the amount of money they've already spent, going through design, engineering, certainly have already paid National Grid for the initial investment to get into the interconnection queue. So certainly, they're putting their wallet behind the project, which I think is a good sign.
All right. I myself personally, I don't see enough, and I haven't had enough time to go through this whole thing to ask you more questions on this proposal. I mean, we receive it Friday and I understand that's the, the course of things. Sometimes maybe we should have another week to do it, like we do with ordinances, we have them for 10 days. And this order comes through in a large contract that I think at one time was $12 million, it's now $6 million. Again, as we're talking about budget and our future, I'd like to make sure that we're really aware of what we're signing up for.
I, I understand and all they're, all they're doing is putting in writing what they've already proposed in terms of dollar numbers, in terms of what they were, what they have agreed to sell to the city and what price the city will purchase. That, that hasn't changed and I, as far as I know, that's not going to change from one week to the next. It's simply, it's simply memorializing what they've already proposed to do.
I understand that, but like I said, the original one was, they're down to 2.8 from what's in the, what I see in the contract, my understanding...
Because that, that's, that's city property and so, once the final documents are executed with aggregate industries, remember, only half of the landfill portion is, is the city's, so they have to do some additional due diligence with aggregate industries and then that will just be an addendum to that existing number.
All right, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Counselor. Counsel Barrett.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too had concerns over the 300 days. Seems like we're tied, tied up with, with somebody who, when I read this, it seems like they can walk away at any number of moments in, in time in this, this, this deal. If, if the net metering is canceled, they can walk away. If, if something happens just in general that they don't like, they don't like, they can just walk away, but we, we cannot walk away. We are, we're kind of tied to them for 300 days while they decide whether they're going to go.
Well, that's because nobody, if National Grid could guarantee interconnection sooner, you would see that, that number truncated, but unfortunately that, we can't hold the developer hostage for things outside of their control and interconnection is unfortunately completely controlled by the utility. I, I think National Grid is doing the best they can, but there are days where they get flooded with 100 applications at once. It's just, and some of those projects move forward and some of those don't.
Okay, and, you know, again, we just got this Friday. What's that, tracking trigger? I think I'm saying it right.
Monitoring.
Yeah, so there's a number we hit and, I'll see if I can find it. I of course can't. This is quite a long piece of paper. It's, I just didn't understand exactly how it works. Perhaps you look at...
Well, there are, there are, there are meters...
It's a trigger?
There are meters on site, so we can monitor production.
So, but if we don't produce, then we have to pay them? Is that, is that how I read that?
No.
Okay.
We only pay for what they can produce.
Okay. And we're not liable for anything that they don't need?
No, we, we don't have a minimum threshold, but it is to their advantage to produce as much as they can. Because the site is, the site is not big enough that could ever accommodate the entire city load.
Right.
It'd be nice if it could, but.
It's called tracking accounts and tracking trigger.
Yep.
Yeah.
And, and part of that is, when they do these interconnections, there's a form called the Schedule Z and it's the accounts that are going to be credited, the city's electric accounts that get credited from the solar array. And that's just part of that formula.
Okay. This would have been better, a few more days ahead. This is a lot to have looked at and absorbed.
I, I understand.
Yes. Thank you very much, Counselor. Counselor Ryan?
Yeah. Orlando, just a question just off the path. Of course, this is going to be the old Groveland Road landfill and that wasn't explained. Many people ask us the next day, what were they talking about, you know, because it's kind of inside discussion. But one of the things that I have long been concerned about is the aesthetics, how this will look. It's in a very high area in the community here. You've got the, I believe it's the Silsby Farm that's along that area. There's some beautiful topography along the river in that area. And if you're on the, the other side of the city looking over, is it going to be a, dominate the, the entire scenery? I'm not.
I don't think it'll dominate the scenery, but it will, it will be visible. I think, you know, the further away you are, the harder it will be to see. You know, some people find them very attractive. I'm sure there are some people that don't. I mean, it will be, I don't want to make it sound like it's not going to be visible.
I mean, that's, that's.
But dominate the photography, dominate the photography.
I know it's, you know, it's a good idea that we're getting revenue from this and, but I think if we're sacrificing the beauty that we have in this community and particularly people who are invested in homes, all in the East Broadway area, all up in that area, which are, many of them look out that way. That's their vista to look at a, you know, a big solar farm. There's one on Hilldale Avenue. You're familiar with that one?
Mm-hmm.
And that's kind of an ugly looking operation. I'm not sure what we make out of it, but it's kind of an urban area. Maybe you might give a little bit, but this is the most scenic part of the city of Haverhill. Looking over into the Bradford area of where St. Philip Neri was, the homes over there. That's a concern I've had all along.
And that was actually one of the reasons why some of the landscape that I think Sun Edison would have liked to use for additional production, had it be off limits, is to preserve, you know, walking trails and, and things of that nature in that area.
Well, I think it's something we, you know, the whole council and the mayor and should be looking at and that is the, you know, is this visual pollution, are we, you know, looking to get $6 million? Is that our revenue, a little more than that?
I, I would say if, if, at full buildout, probably a lot more, but that, that's assuming the net metering credit number doesn't change.
Well, you know, is it, is it worth it if we diminish the value of, of the vista in Haverhill and therefore homes in the city of Haverhill? We may end up losing 10 times that, the potential by taking what I think is a beautiful area. It's, it's something that needs to be discussed. And I think before we do anything, I hope, I know the mayor and I have talked about it, and that is to, to take a look at what the, when it's built out, what is this going to look like? Is it going to be, is it bigger than Hilldale Avenue?
Yes.
You know, and that's.
It's, it's bigger than Hilldale. It's not, it's not as close to anybody as Hilldale. You know, and that's one of the reasons why the state incentivized building on, on landfills as opposed to.
But it's a very high.
Yes.
Hill that it's being built on, so that people can see that hill for miles around. And all along the Riverside section of the city all look out that way. And.
I don't think you would find this necessarily unattractive either. I mean, let's remember, it's a super fund site. It's not exactly prime real estate.
Be a lot better, I think, if we grew some trees there and let, let the next thousand years heal the damage that's been done to it.
And I think that's, that aesthetics, you know, some tree planting, nothing, nothing too high, obviously, but some tree planting and some shrubbery is part of the overall landscape design.
I'm going to conclude, Mr. President, by just saying, I think the, the community that would be impacted by this visual pollution will, when it's built out, there may be a lot of very unhappy people when they look up and see what's built, built there. And I've, I, I know when you're up on many of the new areas that are being built, Seven Sisters Road all up through there, that's, they're paying huge money to, for those homes and everything to look out over towards the farm area and the hills of Bradford. They're going to be looking at a very substantial solar farm. And I think that's something that we should be thinking about. This is thought for everyone.
Thank you very much, Counselor. We do have two other counselors that would like to speak, but I do have a question for the mayor. Would you like to get up to the mic? Yeah, please. So I'm kind of impressed with some of the questions from my colleagues. And the question is, were you aware of some of these potential issues of having the revenues cut in half possibly because of the net metering credits? The 300-day time, timeframe limit.
Orlando's done a wonderful job. I really want to commend him. He's our, as you know, not only our purchasing agent, but our energy manager. He's done a wonderful job of keeping me up to breast. I can't say that I'm anywhere near the, where is he? Anywhere near the expert, pointing to Peter Francis here. Anywhere near the expert that Orlando is. But generally, he's kept me appraised, too.
Okay.
We'll take all these things into account.
Because these are concerning. I mean.
Sure.
I mean, that, really, they, they should have been pitched right up front to us.
We'll take all these things into concern, the vista, et cetera. But overall, this is a good project. It brings in a total of $7.5 million over the years to the city. We'll work on the vista and we certainly want to have blocking trails out there. But overall, this went out to competitive bidding process. It's good for the city and I support it tonight.
Counsel Ryan made some very good points there as well.
I agree in part with him. We certainly want to put some trees and shrubs there, have some trails, make it look nice. But I do point out, as Orlando did, this is a super fund site, which is a polite way of saying it's what we used to know as the city dump. And it's never going to be a work of beauty. But we'll do the best we can to accommodate his views, which I do agree with. We'll, we'll make it look as nice as we can.
Thank you very much. Counselor Barrett?
Thank you, Mr. President. Orlando, when, assuming that they actually do build in the 300-day window.
But the 300 days actually came from the city, by the way. We put a 12-month window in, in the RFP. It wasn't as if that was necessarily proposed by Sun Edison. That is just the general timeline minimum to build these projects. I, you know, anybody who's telling you that.
No, nobody's told me anything. I just thought 300 days.
That project can be built that.
To be married to something.
You still, you still have to get on this DEP, EPA post-closure use permit. A landfill is very different than a rooftop. And so, you know, you can put a rooftop project up in a matter of weeks if you have a simple interconnection, but these landfills are much more complex.
Right. In regard to that and in regard to the, to the neighbors on Groveland Road, how are you going to access the site? What are the, are you going to use the, the aggregate driveway?
Yes.
Are you going to use the, the driveway that goes up the hill?
The aggregate driveway.
Okay. And will you leave the trees that are around the base of the old entrance to the dump?
I think the plan is to plant new ones.
Okay. Because there are, there's a stand of trees, there's the water catch and then the basin and then there are trees.
Yep. I, I mean, they, they can access the site. If heavy equipment is, is going to get in the way, then the trees will probably be removed and, and something else will be planted. But the goal is to preserve as much of the landscape that is there now and then beautify, you know, post-construction.
Okay.
But it's not just, it's not just a matter of, you know, we've looked at this in totality and, and there actually is no empirical research. Solar actually doesn't hurt property values. You know, and I just wanted to make that clear.
I'm more concerned with during the construction and, and then, you know, after.
I think our, our concern.
Because right now, you almost don't even know it's there when you're driving by. I mean, if you, if you walk, you notice the hill and you don't know it's a dump, probably, if you weren't aware of it.
Well, it's a two-pronged approach because I think in conjunction with, with the construction, we're looking to better suit the site for more passive recreation. We think that's an enhanced benefit that will come out of this process. I think one of the things that we, I'm a little concerned about wasn't necessarily the, the views on the landfill, so to speak, as much as disturbance that construction can cause to a butter's for a short period of time.
Right.
You know, you got trucks moving in and out.
There's some water runoff issue in that area, too, as far as just.
Yep, that's, that's all been calculated. That's part of the construction design. That'll all be worked out with DEP and, and our permitting team internally to make sure that, that doesn't remain an issue. But.
Okay.
You know, we still can't, you know, you can't stop heavy equipment from coming in and out.
No, no.
And there, there is some noise that comes with that and that can be a disturbance to a butter's.
You know, it might be a dump, but there are neighbors all around and, you know, just, just so they're aware and you're aware.
Yep. No, and certainly with the capping of the next phase, you know, there's going to be a lot of, there's going to be a lot of activity out there anyway.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. One other question somewhat related to what Counsel Ryan was discussing. What, how many years do we expect those solar panels to last? Is it 20 years?
I, we don't really know. The, the agreements are structured for 20 years with additional provisions to add on at the city's request. But the panels that are being manufactured today could, I, I think have a much longer lifespan. Now, the production level degrades, but they are still functional.
The irony of all this is that solar panels are some of the dirtiest equipment on the planet with regards to the environment. And after that 20 years, geez, I hope we don't put them back in the, the old Groveland landfill.
No.
But, you know, have we thought about that? I mean, that's a serious problem.
Well, we, we won't own it, so we don't inherit any of the liability with disposal. And that was actually one of the, one of the concerns with the preview, with one of the other responses, was the city was taking more of an ownership stake in it. And nobody really knows where that's going in terms of disposal of silicon and that sort of thing. So, you know, we stick to the things we do know and we try to do them well and we try to get out of the things that we don't know.
Right. But I mean, they do have a lifetime, expected lifetime. Those panels are, just like anything else, it has a finite lifetime.
Yeah, I think it's, even though the agreement is 20 years, I think, in reality, I think you'll get more, you'll get closer to 30 years out of, out of the panels these days.
It'll still be a problem.
Yes.
I just wanted to bring that up and I'm hoping that we're considering that in, in the planning that we're doing.
I certainly think Sun Edison has.
Counsel LaPage?
Oh, thank you, Mr. President. I was just going to echo on what Counsel Ryan's request. Did Sun Edison provide or anyone provide what a rendering would be so that we, you know, folks would see what it would look like on the site?
Not in color, but there is, there, there was some schematic drawings that we could certainly, certainly provide.
You know, like Google Earth looking down and then, you know, from different perspectives. I know, being back on the landfill committee, when we talked about the height of it and such like that, there was concern of what would be over the tree line and what folks would be able to see and wouldn't be able to see. So I don't know if that was part of the process of asking them to provide, you know, again, the Counsel Ryan's point of, of what it will look like when it's done. We, you know, we saw renderings of Harbor Place. We know what that'll look like. We hear solar farm and you can drive by the one on Hilldale and others, but until you have an idea of what it's going to really look like in that location, you know, there could be, you know, concerns of neighbors and others.
I don't have them with me, but we could certainly provide a schematic drawing of a, a general basis of what it'll look like.
Not a rendering, not a 3D view of from the street or from across?
That's really.
From Riverside Stadium is, is where you're going to see it. Riverside Park.
It would be hard to get, to at least make it very exact because the project hasn't been permitted yet. Because that, the DEP post-closure use process is going to determine
But CAD drawings, you can easily render.
Yes. And, and that they have submitted.
Okay. But we don't have a copy of that?
No. But if, if you want one, I can certainly provide it.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Ryan?
Just a follow-up to President Mitchison had pointed out about the life of these products, which we obviously know can pollute very, I'm not really up on the science of it, but I know they do. They are made with heavy chemicals. And tell me, if the company goes out of business, these folks that own these types of things usually go out of business, will there be some sort of a bond?
Yes.
That will pay for the removal of all of these?
Yes.
In the end? That's all in the proposal?
Mm-hmm.
You know, and who, who is the bond payable to?
It would be payable to the city of Haverhill. But the bonding company generally will hire its own contractor to deal with those issues. It, it won't put that burden on the city.
Is it a legitimate bonding company? Because there are people out there in.
It will have to be a.
Nebraska and places, South Dakota that sell these bonds that when you go to cash them in, nobody's home.
It will have to be a, a bond from a company licensed to do business with the Division of Banks in Massachusetts. That is, that is our legal protocol.
We should think long and hard before we get on the road with this project.
Yeah. I mean, they, you know, think about what the world would be like if we didn't buy TVs because we were concerned about CRTs. You know, I mean, 30 years gives you, also gives you a lot of time to, from a technology standpoint, to deal with the recycling of these materials.
Probably be a good thing people would stay home and read a book.
Well, unfortunately.
The teachers that were here all smiled and agreed with me.
Well, unfortunately, the Kardashians seem to be more of a priority these days, Counselor.
Unfortunately, you're right.
Thank, thank you very much, Counselor. I do have a question for you, Counsel Ryan. Since you did make the motion, would you like to change your motion based on some of the questioning? I'm just giving you.
Well, I wanted to put the matter on, on the board. I'm going to vote against it, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I wanted to put it on for, for discussion.
I was, I was thinking more along the lines of taking a little bit more time to look at it, but.
Yeah, I think that's, Counsel LaPage had suggested that. I think maybe with new information that's come out tonight also, no, no one is really looking at the visual. I think we, I think as a group ought to go to all of the areas that would be impacted to take a look and say, what are folks going to have to look at? How big is it?
Let's not get carried away. This is a dump site. It's never, this is.
It is a, it's not, it's a beautiful site, Mayor.
No, it's not. It's the dump, it's the Haverhill dump.
You're in Riverside looking, go up on Seven Sisters Road, Mayor, look over. It's beautiful.
I've put this 10,000 times at so have you. It's the city dump. It is never, we're going to support having a garden or lots of trees.
Certainly, you put, we have loom on there. Let's plant some trees and make it.
Absolutely. Well, well, it's not so clear that we can do that, but we will do what we can, absolutely, positively. But this is, right now, is a naked hill. It's the city dump site that's been capped. That's what it is. It's not a beautiful vista of anything.
Sure it is.
No, it isn't. Please. Can we do better than we have today? Yes. I want to quote from what one of the counselors said the last time we came before you. He said, "This is an excellent proposal. This is terrific. This is far better than what was proposed before, than when, when it was proposed that we have ball fields up there." Do you remember who that counselor was, Bill?
It was, but I.
It was you. You were right then.
The reporter from the Tribune. I hope that when he goes out of here tomorrow, he goes up to the, to the Riverside area or up on Seven Sisters Road and takes a photograph.
Of a naked.
You will see a very beautiful vista.
Of a naked hill.
No, well, that's a good.
We'll do everything we can to plant around it and to make it look as good as we possibly can. But I really would encourage you to vote for this tonight. It's $7.5 million into the city. It is, as all of you said before, when you voted for it before, an innovative proposal that's better than anything that's presented.
I'm going to make a motion to delay this for.
Thank you.
For.
I'll second that.
I was going to ask Counsel LaPage how much time you needed.
Uh, two weeks.
Two weeks, at least.
Motion by Counsel Ryan to postpone for two weeks, seconded by Counsel Barrett. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Scaramaccia.
Yes.
Counsel Barrett.
Yes.
Counsel Masek.
Yes.
Counsel Ryan.
Yes.
Counsel Sullivan.
Yes.
Counsel Daly O'Brien.
Yes.
Counsel McGonigal.
Yes.
Counsel LaPage.
Yes.
President Mitchison.
Yes.
Nanyay Ziranez.
If you could let me know those, those questions that, that you have, I'd certainly be happy to provide answers, but at the same time, the, the queue gets full. So the, the longer the delays, the, this harder it is to make this project or any project work.
Well.
And I just want to, want to be clear.
Right. But let's also be clear, we've got to get our ducks in line.
They are.
Before we pull the.
More time to read the agreement.
Before we pull the trigger.
I'm, I'm happy to interpret anything, anything you need in there, but I just, I mean, if there was something else that had $7 million, $7.5 million attached with my own means, you know, I'm, I'm for any other suggestions you have. But the, the window is, is very short here and I just want to, want to stress that.
Okay. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, next item.
Ordinances, which should be placed on file for 10 days. Ordinance regarding parking, 30 Lancaster Street handicap parking. Ordinance regarding parking, 49 Bellevue Ave, handicap parking. And ordinance regarding pedaling and soliciting ice cream vendors.
And is there a motion to place those on file?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Counsel McGonigal, seconded by Counsel Barrett. All in favor? Aye. All opposed. That passes. Next item.
Monthly report from the Board of Assessors for April 2015.
And a motion to place that on file?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Counsel Daly O'Brien, seconded by Counsel Barrett. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. That passes. Next item.
Communication from Counsel Mitchison requesting a discussion about the Greater Haverhill Foundation Partnership with the Massachusetts Technology Collaborative Innovation Institute to develop comprehensive economic development plan and execution.
I know I'm going to break all of your hearts, but I'm going to ask that somebody make a motion to postpone this until June 30th.
Never seen something get a fourth, fifth and sixth.
Motion by Counsel Daly O'Brien, seconded by Counsel Barrett. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Scaramaccia.
Yes.
Counsel Barrett.
Yes.
Counsel Masek.
Yes.
Counsel Ryan.
Yes.
Counsel Sullivan.
Yes.
Counsel Daly O'Brien.
Yes.
Counsel McGonigal.
Yes.
Counsel LaPage.
Yes.
President Mitchison.
Yes.
Nanyay Ziranez.
That passes.
President, we didn't want to let you down.
Thank you very much. Next item.
Communication from Counsel McGonigal requesting the removal of a handicap parking space at 615-617 River Street as it is no longer needed.
Counsel McGonigal.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is, property has been purchased by someone who will not be requiring the handicapped space. So can we send this off to planning for an ordinance to remove it?
Motion by Counsel McGonigal, seconded by Counsel Daly O'Brien. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. That passes. Next item.
Communication from Counsel McGonigal submitting the recommendations of a traffic and safety committee held, meeting held on May 14th, 2015, reporting on items 1, 2, 3, and 5, which were brought to the traffic, traffic and safety committee at the request of the city council.
Counsel McGonigal.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I will be reporting on items 1, 2, 3, and 5. So if you'll bear with me just for a bit, the first item is for. if you'll bear with me just for a bit. The first item is for increased traffic and speeding on Laurel Ave, which actually was something I believe Councillor Barrett had put on the docket, and we sent it over to Traffic and Safety. Councillor Sullivan and I were able to attend the meeting. And this really has to do with some buses that have been using this thruway, and not as much about speeding, but there is a speeding component. And we had a great conversation with Chief De Naro and Officer Powell, and we're going to make some considerations on Laurel Street. We're, number one, going to post some signage of what the actual speed is in both directions, because we can say people are speeding, but if they don't know what they're doing, then we, we need to alert them. And Officer Powell is going to go up there and also study that speed and record it for a couple of days to get an idea. There's also talk about bringing up the solar speed limit sign that tells you who's going and what you're going to, to help people in the neighborhood understand what is expected of them. So that was a very positive thing, and we hopefully will resolve that a little bit, and if not, we'll come back here again and talk to, to that again. Did you have a question? I'm sorry. I thought you were talking. Oh, okay, sorry. Okay, discussion number two was Route 110 near Winnicott Park, and I think that Councillor Sullivan was the councillor that brought this to us. And we had a good discussion about this and some of the things that are going to be taking place up in that area, like the reconfiguration of the intersection of 108 and 110. And along with that, Councillor Sullivan, with some of his contacts, has got that project to also assume some, some speed limit help right around that area and possibly changing the, the crosswalk to a different part to make it easier to go through. And Councillor Sullivan is also in discussions and going to help to get a more visual crosswalk signage up in that area to help. And there also will be, you know, that's a big part. There might be some real signalization that's able to happen in that area to really get people's attention, because we have had a few issues up on that stretch. Item number three was also brought to the Traffic and Safety by Councillor Sullivan, I believe. It's the intersection of Longview and Victory Avenue. And the discussion was a discussion about possibly having a four-way stop in that area. At that meeting, Councillor Sullivan informed everyone at the meeting that a few steps had already been taken to make that a safer intersection. And there were a few different items discussed about possibly mowing down or cutting back some of the hedges. And I believe Officer Powell was going to go up in that area to see if we could help alleviate some of the sightline problems in that area. So it's going to remain the two-stop, and a couple of improvements in that area will help public safety in that area. And lastly, there was a discussion about North Ave. We've talked about North Ave many times, and this was actually sent to the Traffic and Safety by the mayor. And a couple of residents from that area brought this to the attention of Chief De Naro about constant speeding. There has been one of the traffic lights that alerts drivers as to their speed, and it also records the speed. And Officer Powell gave us a good number of what's been going on in that street and what cars are, what they're traveling, traveling at. Ultimately, we have many of these same type situations and concerns throughout many of our streets, and Officer Powell is doing his best. Chief De Naro has asked Officer Powell to put a different type of counter on that street to get even more exact traffic counts, and also find ways to spend some time. And he actually asked his third shift commander to make sure that the third shift officers may be spending some time up there as well. So morning drive traffic, when that gets flowing, they could monitor that. And hopefully, if people are speeding, which we believe they are, a few tickets over a week or so, or a month or so, might really help that situation in that area. The mayor was here. We're talking about adding police presence and, and new personnel. Well, we could really use more personnel so we can go out and battle some of these areas where people might be letting their foot get a little too heavy on that accelerator. So this is an action that we'll see what happens, and I'm sure it might not be the last time that we hear about North Ave and, because of the volume of traffic on that area. So that's the report, and thank you very much.
Thank you very much, councillor. Next item.
Councillor Masek submits the minutes of the Natural Resources and Public Property Committee meeting held on May 13, 2015.
Councillor Masek.
Thank you, Mr. President. We held a Natural Resources and Public Property Subcommittee meeting, May 13. All community members were present, Councillor Sullivan, Councillor LaPage, and myself as chair. There was one item to be discussed. It was a petition from Brian Minkel requesting to purchase city land abutting his property on Crystal Lake Road. And a motion was made after discussion that this matter be reported back to the full City Council with the recommendation that it be forwarded to the mayor, along with all department head responses, and with Mr. Minkel's request. And should an agreement for sale be agreed upon between the mayor and Mr. Minkel, then it should come back to this council for surplusing. And that motion passed the committee 3 to 0. Unless there's some opposition from my colleagues in the council, I would like to suggest that you take care of that, Mr. President, in forwarding it to the mayor, along with, you know, with the assistance of our administrative assistant, Barbara Arthur.
I'll do that, councillor.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And are there any committee reports?
I'll adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Councillor Ryan, seconded by Councillor Daley O'Brien. All in favor? Aye, all opposed. Were adjourned.